Tentative milage rate.
Thank you, Vice Chair Owen. So this is the first required public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 tentative milage rate and fiscal year 2024 tentative annual budget. Notification of this hearing was included on the trim front notices mailed to all taxpayers in Hillsborough County, the City of Tampa, and the City of Temple Terrace. The fiscal year 2024 tentative milage rate was discussed with the board on July 17, 2023. The fiscal year 2024 tentative not to exceed milage rate was certified at the July 17, 2023 special board meeting and provided to the property appraiser on July 28, 2023 in conformance with state law. The fiscal year 2024 tentative milage rate of .5 mils is the same as the adopted fiscal fiscal year 2023 milage rate of .5 mils. The fiscal year 2024 milage rate of .5 mils is more than the rollback rate of .4590 mils by 8.93 percent. Justin Laffler, Director of Budgets and Grants, will present the FY 2024 tentative milage rate.
Good evening, Vice Chair, members of the board, Mr. Drainville. My name is Justin Laffler, Director of Budgets and Grants. This is a presentation on tentative milage rate for Hillsborough Transit Authority. The milage rate was discussed with the board on July 17, board meeting. Today, we're going to go over the historical and proposed ad valorem revenues, historical milage rates, and the rollback rates, and then the board resolution. Pursuant to board policy, HART budgets ad valorem at 95 percent. For fiscal year 2024, ad valorem is budgeted at $72,865,102, an increase of 11.5 percent or $7,486,102. This year's tentative milage rate is .5 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of .4590 mils. This is an increase of 8.93 percent. So the rollback rate is the rate that we would charge that would result in the same amount as the previous year tax. That brings us to the resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority adopting the tentative levying of the ad valorem taxes, adopting the tentative fiscal year 2024 milage rate of .5 mils, which is more than the rollback rate of .459 mils by 8.93 percent and providing for the effective date.
Any questions from board members?
If you could use your mic.
Oh, sorry. And my apologies for being late. Any questions from board members?
I'd just like to move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Myers. Any discussion on the motion?
We have to first call for public comment before we-
Excuse me, sorry. Public comment.
So there's a portion, if you'll read this, in the script, you will do the presentation on the milage and the board will ask for question or ask questions, and then you'll do the budget and the board will ask questions, and then we ask for public comment on both, and then you will take the action, sir.
Okay. We will now take public comment regarding the fiscal year 2024 tentative milage rate and fiscal year 2024 tentative annual budget. For those who wish to speak, I ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone here who has signed up to speak?
I'm sorry, Chair, and I hate to interrupt you. We still do need to do the presentation on the budget, on the annual budget. So that, well, we'll call for the public, what I heard was said and what I believe is the script is we'll take that item up and then we'll call for the public comments as part of the hearing after that, and then we'll close and we can go to a vote.
Okay, so now the presentation.
Now the presentation.
Go for it. My apologies.
It's all right.
I'll introduce the actual tentative budget.
Okay.
So the fiscal year 2024 tentative annual budget is $159,149,766 and consists of the following components: the tentative operating budget at $108,688,780; the tentative capital budget at $50,460,986; for a combined total ten annual budget of $159,149,766. The tentative annual budget was discussed with the Board and Finance and Audit Committee during the meetings held from May through August 2023. In addition to the presentation, we have included the budget transmitter letter for your reference. The transmitter letter will be the introduction section of a larger budget document that staff will prepare for submission to the Government Finances Officers Association, or GFOA. The transmitter letter also provides a summary of the FY 24 budget and provides historical information for the various revenue and expense categories. To be eligible for the consideration of an award from the GFOA for our budget, similar to the award that we receive annually for our annual comprehensive financial report, the budget document must excel as a policy document, financial plan, operations guide, and communications tool. We will complete the budget document and submit it to GFOA by the deadline of 90 days after the adoption of the budget. Justin Laffler, Director of Budgets and Grants, will present on the FY 2024 tentative budget. Mr. Laffler?
Good evening again, Justin Laffler, Director of Budgets and Grants. I will be presenting the fiscal year 2024 tentative budget, and like Mr. Drainville said, this budget has not changed since the last time it was presented to the Finance and Audit Committee. Today we'll be going over the operating statistics, staffing level, operating revenues and expenditures, expenditures, capital revenues and expenditures, capital project list, combined annual budget, and then the board resolution. Operating statistics total 8.6 million miles, 691,000 revenue hours, and an estimated 12 million riders. Our staffing summary for fiscal year 24. The majority of HART employees are represented by the ATU, making up 76 percent of the staff. Teamsters represent 7 percent of HART employees and 17 percent are non-bargaining. Operating revenue is budgeted at $108,688,780. The largest source of revenue is ad valorem at 67.04 percent, and just a reminder, ad valorem is budgeted at 95 percent. Expenses also total $108,688,780. Salaries and wages make up 50.04 percent, fringe benefits 11.33 percent, and healthcare makes up 10.89 percent. These categories combined to make up 72.26 percent of HART's operating expenses. Capital revenues total $50,460,986. 51.54 percent comes from the FTA's Urbanized Area Formula Grant 5307. Capital expenses also total $50,460,986 and are split into six different categories. The vehicle and maintenance total is $19,309,883. The breakdown for facilities and construction is $10 million, $50,000. The breakdown for technology is shown at $14,559,171. And this is the breakdown of the last three categories. Bus stops and shelters total $5,365,470. Planning and studies $150,000, and safety and security total is $326,462, making up the total budget of $50,460,986. The total combined HART budget for fiscal year 2024 is $159,149,766. This takes us to the resolution to adopt a tentative fiscal year 2024 annual budget of $159,149,766 and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much, Chair. We appreciate it. Are there any questions for our interim CEO or staff before we proceed from board members? We will now take public comments regarding the fiscal year 2024 tentative milage rate and fiscal year 2024 tentative annual budget. For those who wish to speak, I ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone signed up to speak or otherwise here?
No, sir.
Okay. Public comment therefore is closed. We will now vote on the fiscal year 2024 tentative milage rate. After the vote on the tentative milage rate, we will vote on the fiscal year 2024 tentative annual budget. The resolutions will now be read. The resolutions read as follows. Resolution number R2023-09-44, a resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the tentative levying of ad valorem taxes, adopting the tentative fiscal year 2024 milage rate of .5000 mils, which is more than a rollback rate of .4590 mils by 8.93 percent and providing for an effective date. And resolution number R2023-0945, a resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the tentative fiscal year 2024 annual budget of $159,149,766 and providing for an effective date. State statutes require that we approve the fiscal year tentative 2024 milage rate before we approve the tentative fiscal year 2024 annual budget. Accordingly, we will vote on each resolution separately. Is there a motion to adopt or amend the tentative fiscal year 2024 milage rate, and is there a second?
I'll move as described.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner and Board Member Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Board Member Myers. Vote if we may, please.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Owen?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Henderson?
Director Frazier?
Yeah.
Director Johnson?
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Director Wohlstall?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, sir.
Thank you for that, board. And is there a motion to adopt or amend the tentative fiscal year 2024 annual budget, and if so, is there a second?
Some-
So moved or seconded?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by a board member and council member Schisler. A roll call, please.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Owen?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Frazier?
Yeah.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Director Wohlstall?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. This public hearing was held in compliance with Florida statutes today, September 12, 2023, to consider the fiscal year 2024 tentative milage rate and the fiscal year 2024 tentative annual budget for the Hillsborough Transit Authority. This concludes this public hearing. The final public hearing is scheduled for Monday, September 25 at 5:30 PM at the Hillsborough Transit Authority. Now, do we roll into the other one? Okay, let's do it.
You go directly into the next one.
We don't need to just keep that train rolling?
I'm told we can continue.
Okay, that's what I thought. And my apologies, everyone, for being late. There was some issues on the way from downtown. I first, before we begin, I wanted to acknowledge, well, let's first begin with a preliminary. Good evening. I am Tampa City Council Member Louis Viera, the Chair of the HART Board of Directors. Please silence all electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. Welcome to the September 12, 2023 Board of Directors' regular meeting, which is now called to order. Staff, please take attendance.
Chair Viera?
Here.
Director Owen?
Here.
Director Williams?
Here.
Director Henderson? Director Frazier? Director Frazier? Director Johnson?
I'm here.
Oh, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Director Kemp?
Here.
Director Knight?
Here.
Director Mechanic?
Here.
Director Myers?
Here.
Director Schisler?
Here.
Director Wohlstall?
Here.
You do have a quorum, sir.
Thank you very much for that. It is pouring outside. I just missed it. Before we begin, I did want to acknowledge our new board member who's here, Mr. David Mechanic, returning, and of course, I served with him. We did a tour of duty on the TPO together. Mr. Mechanic is a longtime, I believe, over 40 years of experience, is a very well-respected Florida attorney and is a shareholder at Mechanic Nucio, Hearns, and Webster, where he is a very, very well-respected, to put it mildly, land use attorney. The number of boards he has served on and chaired would be too many to list herein, and he would probably be embarrassed if I did that, but we do welcome Mr. Mechanic back here and look forward to his continued service. And sir, did you want to make any comments?
No, not at this time, but thank you.
Thank you, sir, and we appreciate your service. And Mr. Mechanic is always a good policy contributor on issues involving transportation, and unfortunately, I will be unable to talk with him on those issues as of a few weeks ago. Next is public comment. Staff, please proceed in facilitating public comment if there is any.
There is no public comment, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Next agenda item is approval of the meeting minutes from our August 7, 2023 Board of Directors' regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, and if so, is there a second?
So moved, seconded.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Council Member Schisler. Roll call, please.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Owen?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Frazier?
Yeah.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Director Wohlstall?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Next is the consent agenda. The HART Board Committee is met on August 21 of 2023 and recommended approval of action items 4A through 4E. Are there any questions to staff about the consent agenda items 4A through 4E?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, and thank you very much. We have a motion by Council Member Schisler, seconded by Commissioner Myers. Roll call, please.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Owen?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Frazier? Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director Mechanic, I apologize.
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Director Wohlstall?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. Maybe we can make this quickly, but I just thought it was, I was really, Mr. Drainville was very excited about moving on the CAD AVL, and I think it'd be, it's pretty dry when you hear that, but I think it'd be really good for us to just have a few minutes of understanding a little bit about how that would improve our system and what it could mean.
Sure. Yep. You're okay with addressing that in your report?
Yeah, I can do that.
Go ahead with your report.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So I could start off with the CAD AVL, but the CAD AVL system is going to be a huge milestone for HART. It brings the technology up to current times. When I say that, like, our system, we have an antiquated analog system currently with a ping rate of, when you look at the real-time performance on the ping rate, you're looking at maybe a minute to a minute and 30 seconds, where today's technology, the ping rates are under 10 seconds. So it's not only going to help the patrons and the riders of the vehicles, but our dispatch and our bus operators are going to, it's going to help on-time performance. We did do a quick pilot a few months ago on Route 1, and it proved that on-time performance between 8 and 11 percent. So this is a fully funded project from FDOT, so super excited about this milestone for HART. So regarding legislative matters, on August 23, I met with State Representative Lawrence McClure. In our conversation, we discussed the peer review and study of the HART Governance and Operational Management Analysis, FDOT is conducting. We also discussed funding for the Heavy Maintenance Facility. Representative McClure did express to me all the great feedback he's been hearing about HART. The conversations were very positive, and Representative McClure offered his support in any way he could. Staff is currently looking to schedule a tour of the HART Operations and Maintenance Facility. This week, on September 14, 2023, a meet and greet is scheduled with Senator Danny Burgess. On September 26, a tour of the HART Operations and Maintenance Facility is scheduled with Senator Jay Collins. On August 21, Board Member Eric Johnson and the HART staff met with Holland and Knight to discuss the FY 2024 legislative priorities. The development session was very productive, discussing ways and opportunities to secure funding. The proposed top priorities will be presented to the Strategic Planning and External Relations Committee for review and recommendation to the full Board of Directors. A quick update on the State Bill 256. HART submitted its second petition to the Public Employees Relations Committee, PERC, for a modified waiver that extends at least for the duration of the federally funded projects. Specifically, the second petition sought a modified waiver and provided perk with the dates of duration for the federally funded projects as rationale for extending the current waiver. On August 31, PERC granted HART's request, and the waiver was forwarded to Department of Labor for the final certification of pending grant applications. In response to the correspondence regarding PERC's ruling, the DOL issued final certifications for over 62 million in pending grant applications. HART was the first transit agency in the state of Florida to secure a waiver from PERC. Just to add to that good news, HART CFO, Ms. Loretta Kirk, was able to execute a grant last Friday. FTA released a 2022 cash critical 5307 grant for $18.3 million. Regarding service operations, in close coordination with the Hillsborough County Emergency Operations Center, the City of Tampa's EOC, and the school board, the HART team developed a successful emergency operations service to transport the citizens to shelters during the Hurricane Idalia. The HART team secured HART's assets, facilities, and fleet for the storm, as well as directed staff and employees during the safe and efficient service restoration projects. Community engagement, on August 17, HART held the Pathways to Business Expo, a DBE/SV forum at the C. Blith Andrews Junior Public Library. Staff members were on hand to inform and educate participants on ways to contract with HART. Also in attendance were Board Members Commissioner Glenn Myers and Director Marvin Knight. HART partnered with the participating agencies who set up exhibit tables to distribute information on small business certification, finding contract opportunities with local and federal government, and resources available to assist small business. I attended the 2023 Automated Vehicle Summit. From September 6 to September 8, the Tampa-Hillsboro Expressway Authority Theater hosted the 11th Annual Florida Automated Vehicle Summit in Tampa. The 2023 FAV Summit focused on ACES, automatic connected electric and shared mobility, and the future of automation in Florida. The summit assembled nationally recognized experts and industry leaders to discuss the state of autonomous and connected vehicle technologies, implementation opportunities, and challenges. For employment engagement, on August 21 and 22, the leadership team offered several informational sessions to the employees to review the FY 2024 proposed budget. The sessions were scheduled throughout the day at various times to allow for attendance to all employees, depending on their shifts and their schedules. On August 25, HART celebrated the artwork of one of our own with the unveiling of the Art on HART bus. Bus operator James Eisenhardt, "The people are what make Hillsborough County great," reflects the essence of historic Ebor City. Chair Louis Viera and myself congratulated James and provided him with a $200 gift card and bragging rights, as the bus will be featured throughout Hillsborough County for a year. Also, on August 26, HART continued its One HART Celebrations Employee Engagement Series with the kickoff, season kickoff in support of the Tampa Bay Buccaneers. The season kickoff welcomed a special guest, Martin Gramatica, Super Bowl winner and former Tampa Bay Buccaneers place kicker, who spoke to employees and provided signed items for a raffle. The goal behind the One HART Celebration is to bring the team together, recognize team members' tenure, and also those going above and beyond, and provide a presentation geared towards the personal and professional growth. The One HART Celebration is not only recognized and engage employees, but also to educate and inspire as well. Lastly, on September 4, Labor Day, Chair Viera and Board Members Commissioner Pat Kemp, Director Melanie Williams, and Director Marvin Knight, along with the HART staff, came together and thanked HART employees for their service and dedication to HART. Chair also provided and passed out donuts. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for interim CEO? Yes, sir, go ahead.
I just want to make quick comments, just to tell you how much I appreciate the hard work that you've put in. Whether it's state representatives or even employees that show up at my town hall meetings, everybody tells me what a great job that you're doing. So I just want to tell you to keep it up. You took over at a time that, I'll be honest, I would not have. So appreciate your hard work and you rolling up your sleeves for this organization. Thanks.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Well said. Board Member Knight, go ahead, sir.
Again, good evening, everyone. Also, I'd like to piggyback on-
Oh, and if you could speak to the mic if you don't mind.
Thank you, P, on what you're saying, that appreciate everything. And also, we went over at the yard on Labor Day, you know, the staff, the workers and everyone, it was a great opportunity. And all throughout Hillsborough County, the leadership you have shown in what we all agreed on unanimously to put you in that interim position, and you came out real well. So hopefully, and I'm praying that even tonight, that we'll move toward, I think it's been long enough, tax saving, that we don't have to go out and search or anything like that. You know, from the workers, the staff, everybody, including the board, the respect and the leadership that we need to, go ahead and let's make this thing happen. Move from interim to full CEO. Thank you.
Put a ring on it.
I'd like to make a win, yeah. And I'd like to make the motion.
And is that a motion you're making now, or for major?
I think it's-
I know.
On the right time.
I was just making just-
Or you can move it up in your agenda if you'd like.
Just making sure. Just make any other comments, anyone else? Okay. And obviously, I agree with that. We'll be talking about that in a little bit, and CEO Drainville's a great guy. His, you know, relationship with everyday workers here at HART, I think, is amazing, and he's a good guy, and as they say in Rhode Island, you are wicked smart. So there you go. Very smart guy. Excuse me. Thank you very much for that. Next, I'd like to share a couple of updates, if I made during my report. First is regarding approval of the 2024 HART Board Committee's meeting. In the past, board members requested that the HART Board meeting calendar be approved by the board for a year ahead. It is also consistent with the practices of other government agencies. The proposed meeting schedule is included in your packet. The meeting frequency and cycle remains the same. Board regular meetings on the first Monday of the month and committee meetings on the third Monday of the month. The only exceptions are in January due to the holidays, July during the summer vacation month, and in September due to our budget public hearings. Is there any discussion by the board members or any questions regarding the proposed 2024 calendar year meeting schedule? Okay, thank you very much. They're moving forward-
Can I just?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't look at it explicitly, but one thing that's come up over time is we have a lot of commissioners on here, and sometimes the meetings are scheduled, particularly, I think, the committee meetings, which I go to, but they're scheduled during the meeting free period that we have, which is a rare thing. And so I just want to make sure that it, whatever we do, that that's moved early enough so it doesn't conflict with that, because then you have trouble getting a quorum.
Yeah. And I would say, as a city council member, not to schedule anything on Tuesday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, because our meetings run five days now. No, I'm joking. That's a joke. But not really. Anybody else? Any other questions or comments on that? Okay. Next, moving on to the autism campaign. Y'all will remember that recently I proposed that HART begin a campaign to promote awareness on the people that we serve, and obviously, I mean, one of the biggest core groups of folks in Hillsborough County, we serve our people with disabilities, intellectual disabilities, physical disabilities, et cetera. My thought on that was that we should promote the great work that we do, you know, especially whenever there is scrutiny on HART, right? We got to talk about the great things that lie ahead and that we're doing presently right now for HART because of the people that we serve. And one of those groups, obviously, is people with disabilities. It's an issue that's very, very personal to me. Most of y'all know of my oldest brother, Juan, who's 52 years old and has intellectual disabilities. And Juan has never had to rely on HART because of my mother, but a lot of his friends have, and everything to get to jobs anywhere from Publix to Chick-fil-A to God knows where, McDonald's Training Center, et cetera. A lot of folks rely on that. So I tasked HART marketing team with something near to my heart, and it came up to be the HART for All campaign. HART for All features an educational component with guides developed with community partners such as CARD USF, that's the Center for Autism and Related Disabilities. The City of Tampa worked closely with them for the prior mayor Buckhorn's Autism Awareness Campaign, and Lighthouse for the Blind, aimed at assisting those with autism and other disabilities on how to utilize- on how to utilize Hart's service. The guide also features sections for Hart operators and other employees on how to assist those customers in need, because you don't know what you don't know, and a lot of folks don't know about, for example, sensory challenges, et cetera, and it's something that is learned. And just because somebody doesn't know it, doesn't make them a bad person at all. The campaign also features an awareness component with a Hillsborough County Public Schools art contest, social media collateral, and a series of videos highlighting customers who rely on Hart for transportation. I know we reached out to a couple of folks, including Sam Piazza. Some of y'all may know, they made a movie on him in Tampa. He works at, what is it, PDQ, and is a really, really nice gentleman, and I've known Sam for many years through best buddies. So to kick off the Hart for All campaign, I want to invite all board members to a launch event that will happen in October. The date will be determined. Hart staff will be in touch with additional details. So again, the reason that we're doing this is to make sure that the public knows the folks that Hart serves, and that when people look at Hart and the people's hard-earned tax dollars that go to Hart, you help out people like my brother, not to mention a bunch of other folks who just want to get to work to put food on their table, a lot of veterans getting to VA appointments, veterans like our friend here, Commissioner Wassel, and many, many others. So this is something we're doing. Any comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
I think this is excellent, and I've often wanted people to understand or know more about the Hart budget in terms of its investment in paratransit, which I've looked often, and it has been one-sixth of the entire budget. And that is not to even speak of, because we don't include that in our budget, those that use our regular bus service that also have, you know, issues. So, you know, it's just an incredibly important service, and I actually, I mean, I've been talked to so many times. In one case, I just remember parents of a young woman at USF, and she had developed seizures, and she was in South Tampa, and, you know, could no longer, she lost her license or for a time couldn't drive, and they were dependent on Hart, and that's when they were shocked and didn't, they had no idea about how underfunded and how difficult our system was for their daughter to get from USF to South Tampa. So it is, you know, it serves so many people, and this is such an important aspect and critical aspect of those it serves. So I think this is very, very good.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to echo your sentiments. Mr. Drainville and Justin and I, we've had a conversation about this. We were going over the budget ahead of time and how the disability support from a budget standpoint is the foundation of we building on our budget from there. And so I thought that that was insightful for me to know, and then also just to add on to what you were saying, that that is a significant part of what we do as a baseline before we even move forward with others. And so I think more insight and information on that would be helpful for us to understand that as a board. Thanks, Justin.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Next, we move to the very controversial subject of a permanent status for interim CEO. I say that sarcastically. This discussion has been brought to you as a follow-up to a few requests from the board members expressed by Directors Schisler, Knight, Kemp at the August seventh, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Directors Regular Meeting, as well as raised again during new business of the annual, or strike that, of the August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three Strategic Planning and External Relations Committee Meeting by Committee Chair Johnson. The committee unanimously passed the motion to bring a discussion item to the full board on transitioning Scott Drainville to a permanent status as the Chief Executive Officer of Hart. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir, go ahead, and then Commissioner Kemp, go ahead.
Just whatever contract comes forward, I'll ask personally that both of you use your expertise to review, and then also whatever Hart staff, so we can avoid whatever happened in the past. Thank you.
Commissioner?
So you're bringing, this isn't the final approval, this is just for us to ask you to pursue a contract? Okay.
That's my...
And I think that's, obviously, we're all very pleased to have Ms. Drainville here, and that would be, I think, a wonderful thing for stability and message to the community and to this transit agency about its leadership. So I think that that's a very good, good move.
Thank you, ma'am. Board Member Schisler, go ahead, and then Board Member Knight.
With this, we'll strike the word interim from his title?
Yes, sir.
Effective immediately?
Yes.
Good.
I believe so. Ms. Mandell?
It wouldn't be effective until I brought, we bring a contract back, so we'll, but we could go ahead and, after action of the board, go ahead and prepare a contract pretty much in line with what we have now, removing that connotation and ensuring that all other issues that Commissioner Wassel, that came up during the previous contracts have been rectified. We actually did review that as part of the interim contract, so we'll just make sure that that's all been rectified and get that back to you so you can review, and then at the point in time we have a new contract. That's how that will proceed forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Board Member Schisler, anything else, sir?
Nope.
Thank you, sir. Board Member Knight and then Board Member Mechanic.
Okay. With all said, like I said previous, I'd like to make the motion that all the necessary things that we need to do, that we talked about prior to this, and even at the interim part, that we would make sure the points on the contract and everything, and make the motion that we start on whatever we need to do to make it happen.
Second?
Yes, sir. And thank you for that, and Board Member Mechanic.
Yeah, we just, we didn't mention a timeframe, but I would hope we could get that done at the next board meeting.
I think, given that this action started through the committee process, came to the board, we'll just go ahead and bring the final contract back to the board at your next regular meeting unless there's a desire to do anything different.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, sir.
There's no requirement that we may not know about that says we must solicit the position, is there? I don't want any weird things sneaking up.
There is not.
Okay.
Anyone else? A board member, go ahead, go ahead.
Do you want the job? That would be a better question to ask.
Yes, ma'am, I am fully committed to Hart.
Okay. We, now, to get some specificity on Director Knight's motion, when do you wish to have this back? And maybe you can inquire with Ms. Mandell when it would be proper, the next meeting? Do you have any preference, sir, as the maker of the motion? Next month?
Next month, as soon as prepared. And we did ask in the previous meeting his intention, and he did say, so we did follow protocol.
You have a full board meeting in November, so we'll plan to have that back for the full board meeting in November. And at this point, I think the terms of, as they exist, if there's any additional terms that come out during our conversation, we can have that conversation at that meeting, but, so we'll just plan to have that brought back to you at the November, I don't know the exact date, the November board meeting.
Great. Okay, any other further discussion? Okay, we have a... Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, and the last thing on the discussion, that, you know, even the bank pay, whatever it take from the time that get all those points in there on retro and everything.
Okay. And I guess, so is that a formal part of your motion, or are you just saying that as a preference?
What you're saying is that if there's anything that should be retroactive to today's day of the action, we can go ahead and add that into a contract. I'm not sure that there's anything that needs to be retroactive, but it can be deemed retroactive to this date, and we can certainly write that into the contract. Otherwise, the date would be the date of approval, which would be November sixth.
And Board Member Schisler, are you okay with that as the second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion by Board Member Knight, seconded by Board Member Schisler? If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Owen?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Henderson?
Yes.
Director Frazier?
Yeah.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Director Wassel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
And I know I share, everyone shares these sentiments, but just in Mr. Drainville, the real, just really remarkable showing that this is of this board coming together not long after you've begun as the interim CEO, just shows what an impressive guy you are and how you, what's that old saying by Saint Francis of Assisi, preach always, speak if you have to? And that's you. You just do the job, so that's wonderful. Moving on to the general council's report, Ms. Mandell?
Before?
Oh, go ahead, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I just didn't want to interrupt you when you were going through the report before, but I just wanted to say I really appreciated that, I guess you had scheduled that event at the Hart headquarters on Labor Day, and I thought it was a really great opportunity, so I'd be up for other opportunities as well. We've been, because of COVID, and I think the former director wasn't really a fan of those, we probably had fewer, but we used to have, we had more in the first few years, and I thought it was a really great opportunity. We used to have at Thanksgiving, they made dinners for people, and we could just go over for a little while. I think all of those are good things, and it sounds like workers that were there appreciated us being there, but I really appreciated the opportunity to talk to them. And one other comment is, I finally, I got to see the second floor of the facility where the buses were, are stored over there, and I did not know it had a second floor, even though I've been toured through there about ten times. And it is, even though the tiles were replaced last year, already there's mold, there's water stains, there's damages that have come to the equipment up there. In fact, as I had told Mr. Drainville, and it's quite a bit of expense that I guess even interim, we have to repair that kind of corrugated metal ceiling, if you've seen it out there, if you want to go up and see what these rooms are. It's, we so have to do something about this facility sooner rather than later. But the other thing is, as I said, even when they, they have to repair it again already, even though it was just repaired last year, because it was supposed to be so terrible, and you can see the mold in the lights, by the way, everything. And I had suggested that the next time we do it, it's industrial style, that we don't even put the tiles up again and just expose the ceiling and everything, because it doesn't seem worth it to do anything else, and it seems like it'd be an easier solution than I'm sure the efforts took. But I just wanted to, if you haven't seen that part of the facility, you probably should see it to get the whole flavor of everything and to understand more about it. But, so I appreciate, I appreciate that thorough tour and to understand that, because it makes each of us, I think, even stronger advocate, if we could be, for doing something about that facility, but also out in the community. So I really appreciated that, and I think the more we can get over there or have opportunities to get over there is a good thing.
Yep, and I agree, and I was glad to hear that we're having Senator Burgess and Collins and Representative McClure out there. I think that would be great. The minute they get a look at it, they're going to go, oh, my God. So that's, that's really good. And thank you for that, Commissioner Kemp. Next is General Counsel's report. Ms. Mandell, go ahead, ma'am.
I don't have anything to report for tonight.
What do you know? That's always good. Next, our Hart Board Committee reports are included in the packet under Section Eight. Reports from Hart Board Representatives are included in Section Nine. Monthly information reports are provided in Section Ten. Is there any old business?
Yes.
Commissioner Wassel, then Board Member Schisler, go ahead, sir, and then Board Member Myers, go ahead.
Unfortunately, we had Tampa Bay Water once again conflict. What is the update on my representation for the Hillsborough County unincorporated? I mean, it's, it's very straightforward, it's on census.gov, that we have over a million people now, our bylaws are very clear. So did we get an update? I didn't see one on today's meeting.
I haven't.
I probably should have commented on that. We have not heard back from the state yet. We've sent them a letter, and I think the plan is to try and see if we can, nudge them to get us an answer as soon as possible.
Okay, I'll handle that then from here.
Okay, if you want to maybe do a motion for us to do a follow-up letter?
I don't even really know. We don't need the state's permission, it's in the bylaws, it's very clear. The representation is reported by both census.gov and the state's Bureau of Statistics that were, there are a couple hundred off, but both of them said that we're a million eight-thousand as of April the first of two thousand and twenty. So it's, I think it's very clear, I'm not, I'm very, I'm extremely disappointed, I don't believe that something like this should be so difficult to come to a conclusion, so more to come on that then. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Board Member Schisler, and then Board Member Myers, and Board Member Knight, go ahead.
Yeah, at the risk of sounding too parochial, any, where we stand with the property discussion in Temple Terrace? I'm not even sure where we are on that.
I'll have Ms. Bailey come up and report on that.
Good evening, everybody. Brenda Bailey, Director of Legal Services, sorry, Director of Legal Services. So we presented the agreement, and we've also submitted or provided to you all several documents that would be helpful if you'd had, if you've had an opportunity to actually review it or take a look at it, that would be helpful to give you a framework of where we are. From the committee meeting, at the next committee meeting, we should have some questions answered by General Counsel as far as, and with their recommendation to the board as to what they recommend for us moving forward. One of the main issues would be whether or not that contract is even valid, can be enforced, whether or not the issues that were raised are even an issue, or gives them grounds to proceed the way that they want to. They want to acquire the property for about eighty-five thousand dollars. So we're just waiting for a recommendation from General Counsel, and then it should be up for consideration by the board.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Commissioner Myers and Board Member Knight, and then Board Member...
I was just going to ask, did we receive documents? The documents were sent to the board members on the property?
They were in the committee packet.
Committee?
Yes, the last committee.
Thank you.
Meeting.
And I probably prematurely ended that. Any, inadvertently, any other comments? Board Member Schisler, you satisfied, sir?
Okay.
Under the circumstances?
Yeah.
Thank you. Board Member Myers, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Just want to get a status on the District Three shelters that are in place now. What's the status?
Ms. Crescentini, could you come up and give a status on that?
Good afternoon, Linda Crescentini, Director of the Project Management Office. Are you asking specifically how many shelters are in District Three? No. I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
The question was that last meeting, I asked the director, would he give us an update on the shelters? We have benches, but no shelters, and some needed shelters and benches. So that's what I was asking for.
Okay, so we do have a plan, I think it was included in the last committee, maybe it wasn't presented in the board packet, just in the committee, but we can get a report of exactly how many existing shelters are there, how many new shelters are going in. We're down to the last few right now. We only have a few left to be able to put from the initial order, and we're waiting for funding to come through to purchase our next order, which the funding is, should be released shortly. So I can certainly get that information for you for the next meeting.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Any further questions on that? Okay, Board Member Knight, go ahead, sir.
Yes, and it'll probably fall under new business, but I was thinking and likely encourage fellow board members to maybe consider sometimes on perhaps taking the bus, you know, learn a little bit more about it, and maybe we can get together, even the thing you're talking about doing, maybe we can meet somewhere, ride in or somewhere close, so some of us get together and just, just do that, because there's so much exciting and really learn a lot from the drivers, the people who ride it, and some of the things that goes on. So I want to learn more about it, and when I do get on it, it's very interesting and fun, so. At least once a month, my goal is to ride one.
Yes, sir, and I think that's a great suggestion. I remember when I, I've been on a Hart bus probably maybe ten, twenty times in my life, but if not a little bit more, but last time I was on there with something Congresswoman Castor, I remember talking to a young gentleman who'd come here from Cuba, literally like five or six months ago, and he was, you know, on his way to work at, I think it was at University Mall. Yeah, just the people you meet, it's fascinating, so. So any comments on that? Okay, thank you, sir. And maybe Mr. Drainville or CEO interim, whatever I call you now, Drainville, we can get something like that set up, like a board...